Okay, welcome everyone to the Longdale City Council meeting. I want to thank everyone for joining here tonight. I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to give us the roll call.
Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Pat Kearney to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all. Something like that, it's okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Suction out, but it's all good.
Alrighty, let's hear from our public safety report. Let's hear from our Captain Allen. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for September twenty first through October fifth. As we enter the fall season, it appears our nation and city continues to progress and open up. This is due to community members being diligent in their efforts to protect themselves and their fellow citizens. It's much appreciated. In regards to crime, the city's overall crime rate remains low. We continue to see a decrease in burglaries, robberies, as well as grand theft autos, which are down from previous highs. Assaults and larceny's have increased slightly due to an increase in domestic violence and shoplifting. Also, some of the larceny's are due to outside persons meeting in the city using the OfferUp app and subsequently having their merchandise stolen from them. As a reminder, when selling items via OfferUp or similar apps, please ensure you meet in a public and well-lit location and never use your home. I would also like to tell you about an outstanding arrest by our deputies. On September twenty sixth afternoon, Deputy Gonzalez was dispatched to the fifteen thousand two hundred block of Eastwood Avenue regarding shots fired in the area. After contacting an informant, it was determined that the shooter had a verbal altercation with the informant, then retrieved an assault rifle and fired multiple rounds into the ground in front of his residence. After contacting the suspect, he and the informant were detained pending an illegal shooting investigation. While conducting a protective sweep of the residence, Deputy Gonzalez observed an AR fifteen in plain view. A search warrant obtained to recover the weapon. The suspect was placed under arrest, transported to South Los Angeles Station, and booked for possession of an unregistered firearm, possession of an assault weapon, possession of a high-capacity magazine, and negligent discharge of a firearm. In regards to Project Room Key, there have been no significant issues or concerns over the past month. In regards to South Los Angeles Station, we still remain the focus of protests. However, the frequency of the protests have lessened and all protests have been peaceful. Last department was mandated to provide support for the Bobcat Fire. Therefore, all patrol station personnel were on twelve-hour shifts. This ended last week. However, the result was extra patrols in the city during that time. This concludes my public safety report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Captain Allen's report. Are there any questions of the Captain's report? Okay, with that, I want to thank you, Captain Allen, for your report and thank you for your deputy service to the community.
Uh, thank you.
Alright, let's move to oral communications. Mr. Assistant Clerk, is there any oral communication we can hear?
Good evening, Mayor. No public comment has been received.
Okay, seeing that there's no public comment, we will then skip comments from the council and we will advance our agenda to item F, which is the consent calendar. There's five, seven items on the consent calendar. What is the pledge of this body concerning such?
Well, if there's no motions or subtractions, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as written.
Okay, so the motions being made by Kearney that we approve the consent calendar and second by Allen. Is there any discussion on the motion? Then I'm gonna ask the Council to vote and ask the Assistant City Clerk to give us the roll call.
Mr. Mayor, before the vote, sorry, this is Tiffany Israel, the city attorney. Can I read the two ordinance titles?
Yes, ma'am. That's a great idea.
Thank you. First ordinance on consent is ordinance number one one seven five dash two zero. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending Longdale Municipal Code Chapter seventeen point fifty to update density bonus standards for consistency with state law. The second ordinance is ordinance number one one seven six dash two zero. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending sections eight point two four point one one five and eight point two four point two hundred of the Longdale Municipal Code to provide authority for recovery of attorney's fees and imposition of trouble damages in public nuisance abatement actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney for regendo. There's a motion on the floor. If there's no further debate or discussion, I'm gonna call the question and ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the roll call.
For the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. We are now on item eight on our agenda. Number eight, which is a public hearing concerning amending the Title seventeen of Longdale Municipal Code that pertains to development standards for accessory dwelling. We saw what's on the staff report. Let's have the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and members of the audience. Tonight, you have perhaps for consideration an amendment to the Longdale Municipal Code Title seventeen pertaining to development standards for accessory dwelling units to reflect recent changes in state law and a finding of exemption under CEQA. As the council is well aware, the state has been aggressively and assertively working on addressing the housing crisis. And as such, the state has more recently updated the ADU regulations. And more, probably a few years back, we've updated the ADU regulations a couple of times. Now you have a final, back in January, the governor signed the law, new recent legislation adopting more standards and restrictions on what cities can and can't do. First and foremost, one of the main tenets of our ADU ordinance was the lot size minimum requirements of eight thousand. The first preamble of the state law virtually was no lot size limitation. So the state actually seemed responded to a lot of agencies putting on a minimum lot size. So that is now been removed. You can no longer restrict ADUs based on lot size. There's been multiple changes for junior ADUs. They've added that concept in, what defined the junior ADU. It's a unit that is containing an existing structure and those are only allowed in the R one zone in Longdale. Some of the other changes that they proposed that we have on the, proposed tonight, which is consistent with state law. Unit sizes are permitted to be as large up to eight hundred and fifty for a one-bedroom unit and one thousand square feet for any ADU more than one bedroom. Lot coverage and open space for ADUs over eight hundred square feet is kind of the the minimum where we could start kind of putting some regulations on them according to HCD. We're required to comply with lot coverage if they go over eight hundred square foot for an accessory dwelling unit and open space requirements. Lot coverage and open space requirements will vary depending on what zone they're in and depending on where they're at, if they have two buildings on their side, two single-family, maybe one single-family and ADU, it just depends. We also were able to work with HCD, the State of California Housing Community Development Department, that actually reviews our new ordinances that we adopt pertaining to accessory dwelling units. And we put it a restrictive height of sixteen feet. All ADUs over eight hundred feet will now be required to provide a twenty-foot building separation required between single-family and the R one zone only. So we were able to update several of these key areas of the ADU regulations. Again, the state is definitely taking away a lot of our latitude and discretion in terms of what we can require on the ADU regulations. But we were able to work with HCD and they reviewed it and gave us our verbals that it was consistent with state law. They, it was about, we had three reviews with HCD and they finally approved our, gave us a verbal on approving our ordinance as proposed. This is exempt from CEQA. We received no comments on the proposed ADU regulation. Planning Commission held a hearing on this item on the twenty-third and recommended approval of the draft ordinance to the City Council. The City Attorney's Office reviewed the resolution and approved it to form, or the ordinance, sorry. There are no fiscal impacts. Staff recommends approval at this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Are there any technical questions or clarifications before we open up the public hearing?
Mr. Captain Kearney, I have a question for Sean.
Yes, sir.
On the J, what's it called? The J D U?
Yeah, the junior ADU, yes.
That's almost like another bedroom in the house, correct? Because you used to use it.
Yeah, I didn't want to get it out. Yeah, that's correct. So basically, they can share some of the common areas, but they can have a separate room in an existing structure.
Okay.
So we can't really regulate those too much, but we can only require them to be only allowed in the R one zone.
Okay, and no more. Five hundred square feet, right?
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Again, Mr. Mayor, the state has really regulated what we can regulate on these ADUs.
Yes, I definitely understand. Okay, thank you for that clarification. It is six forty-one. At this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Are there any, have we received any written testimony on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No testimony has been received.
Okay, no written testimony has been received, but that being the case, I will close the public hearing. It's six forty-two. The public hearing is now closed. And I'll bring it up to the council for discussion on this item. Item number eight.
Hearing no discussion, I'll make a motion to go with the staff recommendation.
And most have been made by Kearney that we approved the staff's recommendation.
This is Councilman Reed. I'll second it.
Councilman Reed has seconded the motion that we approved the staff's recommendation. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Here now, I'm gonna ask Madam City Attorney to, you would like to read it, right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number one one seven seven dash two zero. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending certain sections in Title seventeen zoning of the Longdale Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units and finding of exemption from CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. At this time, I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote on item eight.
Item number eight, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, administration concerning the community center facility use policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Mike Estes from the Director of Community Services here. Appreciate the time I get here to propose these changes to you folks. So we are talking about proposed changes to the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center Facility Use Policy. The city has two rooms in the community center which are available for reservation. The third-floor main event room and the second-floor meeting room, both of which can be reserved as a full room or a half-room. Since the reservation system from the community center began in March two thousand and twelve, staff has had an opportunity opportunity to see what has worked and also gotten a good feel for what has not worked. In this policy, you will have four changes, two major changes, and actually one, two additions. And I would like to just review those very quickly, but there's a a number of things that we think these changes will accomplish. It's gonna simplify the reservation process. It's gonna adopt new customer-friendly processes and part of this plan would be to take reservations, facility reservations online as well to make the city's reservation environment safer and provide the best reservation experience possible for our customers. The first major change is the removal, the staff is suggesting, is the removal of beer, wine, and champagne. Although there have been very few problems related to the inclusion of beer, wine, and/or champagne, the following are issues that have taken place in the past despite the fact that Sheriff's Department is present for all reservations that include beer, wine, and/or champagne. Individuals attending these reservations often are, oftentimes are suspected of consuming alcohol prior to arriving in Longdale. It's often difficult to get those attending these types of reservations that include alcohol to leave the building or property once the reservation has ended. On rare occasions, individuals have brought hard alcohol into the community center without staff's knowledge and against policy, of course, without the sheriff's knowledge as well, evidenced by empty liquor bottles in the trash receptacles, which are sometimes discovered upon cleanup. Those attending reservations, these types of reservations that include alcohol, often end up congregating in the streets while inebriated and sometimes disturbing the neighborhood. And the final bullet point here is cleanup activities often run later than permitted due to the fact that people are having a good time, are not ready to leave, which often results in security deposit deductions and staff working later than expected. Just a few of those processes that we probably won't have otherwise. When the existing policy was approved by the City Council, it was thought that the inclusion of beer, wine, and/or champagne would bring additional revenue to the city and increase the number of reservations substantially. However, since the reservation program began in March two thousand and twelve, there have only been fifty-one reservations including beer, wine, or champagne, which is a three point one percent clip. This equals an average of six reservations, including beer, wine, and/or champagne per year or an average of one every two months over a nine-year period. The loss of one reservation per two-month period will not impact the city's future reservation revenue. In addition, it's believed that most beer and wine champagne-based reservations in the community center are holding their event here to avoid the higher costs of reserving a hotel or some other private facility. The second, this is a change, the second change here is gonna be a change. Staff is suggesting that the city contract with a third-party security vendor to provide unarmed security services at a fraction of the cost to the applicants. The going rate for a deputy right now is anywhere from forty dollars for an SAO up to eighty dollars or even more for a bonus deputy. And we're looking to pass along those savings along to the reservationists in hopes that this will increase our reservation activity, which I do think it will. It's, some have commented that they can't reserve our facilities due to the high costs of the sheriff's security services. This would happen to an RFP process and once again, this would reduce the cost of the reservation supervision substantially for our customers, which I believe will likely result in more reservation activity and reservation that will, activity that would replace the the reservations that we lose due to the removal of beer, wine, and/or champagne. Number three here is an actual change. The reservation process, registration process has strictly been an in-person and onsite registration process. The new suggested process would be a non-refundable deposit system at which those interested in reserving a room in the community center would be required to submit an application and post a non-refundable deposit comprised of twenty-five percent of all reservation costs. So simply put, somebody comes in, they submit an application, they pay the twenty-five percent cost, the room is reserved, no questions asked. And we no longer have to sort through numerous applications to determine who wants what and who wants where. And in the rare case that those that do reserve a facility with a twenty-five percent non-refundable deposit do not follow through with final payment no less than eight days, business days, prior to the reservation or those canceling their reservation will lose their twenty-five percent non-refundable deposit. And the room would be opened, would be freed up for new reservations as well. The fourth major change here is an addition and it's regarding reservation setup and cleanup provisions. City staff is suggesting that the primary applicant be required to submit a floor plan conferring the number of tables and chairs needed for the reservation and their location in the room being reserved. City staff is suggesting that one hour of labor can be charged to the applicant for setup of all city equipment prior to the event and one hour of breakdown of all city equipment following the event. Of course, we would not break down or carry out or get involved in other people's portable equipment that they bring for their reservation. The city attorney has reviewed the attached policy and resolution and has approved them both as to form. The city recommendation is as follows. City staff recommends that the City Council approve Resolution Number CC dash twenty-ten dash zero-five-five related to City Council Policy one hundred four dash twenty affecting changes to the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center Facilities Rules and Regulations to be implemented once the city deems it safe enough for the community center to reopen to the public for reservations. If there are any questions, I am available to answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report on item nine. Are there any questions on the report?
I have, just Councilman Kearney, I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mike, you say about the alcohol. Why are we allowing the people to scare in the street? We supposed to have sheriffs there. Can we move them on their way? You say you found empty containers after the fact. And then you said down lower, you talk about beer and wine, it's only three point one percent. But let's say there's a wedding that wants to have their wedding there or their reception there and they drink champagne to celebrate their marriage. We're gonna disallow that to our residents? Moving down to the security provision. You say that you want to get a rent-a-cop? Well, let's say we have, we leave the alcohol on here. You say it's too costly to rent the cost to have the sheriff's security there, but you wanna put a rent-a-cop there instead? The sheriffs can't handle the inebriation in the street or the drinking, but you wanna put a rent-a-cop with no weapon there? That's kind of asinine. The registration process, in your report, it's in saying about eight days prior. It doesn't say, it said mostly not following through with the final payment of those canceling their reservation will lose twenty-five percent of the non-refundable percent of non-refundable deposit. So they're gonna lose the whole twenty-five percent. Let's say the non-refundable, it's a percentage of the deposit. So let's say it's a thousand dollars. You're saying a family, they cancel within, on day seven, will not get the two hundred and fifty dollars back?
Technically, by rule, yes, but I mean, we would look at, you know, we would look at situations such as, you know, a death in the family, something severe. That would also be, that would be considered. But yeah, in general, you know, for most cases, they're gonna lose their twenty-five percent non-refundable deposit as the policy states.
This is what the new change, you wanna put in place. Well, we're coming off a pandemic and lots of jobs. So we're gonna penalize our residents or even non-residents, a twenty-five non-refundable deposit if they cancel. When it's hard to get that twenty-five percent down. So I think until we get back on track, the city gets back on track and we do think, I think we should waive this one for right now. Because I know a lot of people don't have money, lost jobs, the kids are homeschooled, it's a whole can of worms you can open there. And then reservation setups and cleanups. Robert, you've been to an event with, and I've been to the same event. I've, I had a granddaughter's birthday party there. Staff's never around when you need them. You have a party on the third floor, we should have staff on the third floor. We have to go hunt somebody down. The partiers, the reservationists, as you call them, do all the setup, take down, all the staff just take the trash out. And you wanna charge them an hour before and afterwards? I think that's wrong too. Those are my comments. I'm not gonna vote on this. I want to agree to this. That's just how I feel. Robert, turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I do have a couple of questions myself. Let me ask, if anyone else has any questions that Mike could address.
This is Councilman Reed. I did have a little question. Pat covered part of that already in regards to charging one hour, one hour before and one hour after. Is that planning to actually have staff physically within the room handling all action? Because I too know there's been, you know, in the past, we've let them set things up themselves when they're renting the location. But I have had concerns about the equipment in that case getting damaged, et cetera, because they're not familiar with it. So is this to mitigate that type of damage and is there gonna be someone physically there the full hour ahead of time and after or what? And then the deposit, I need to think a little bit more about that because, you know, as the mention was from Pat, that there are concerns in regards to that. If it was a percentage of that deposit, maybe it's another story, but definitely some enumerated special circumstances would need to be there so it doesn't become just a, hey, off the whim, I'm gonna waive that.
Right, okay. Councilman Reed, to address what I think your first question was, is yes, we would have staff, you know, let's say the reservation ends. Let's say it's midnight till, the reservation's till midnight and cleanup is eleven, you know. We normally do have staff up there. We require staff to be up there. Whether that happens or not, we'll have to do a better job of of confirming that, but the staff would come in at ten thirty and say, hey, you know, cleanup starts in thirty minutes. Come in at eleven forty-five, cleanup starts in ten forty-five, cleanup starts in fifteen minutes, we wind it down. And then at that time, staff would actually come in at eleven o'clock or whatever it is at cleanup time and they would actually start stacking chairs and removing city equipment. Part of, partly, yes, to protect the city equipment. And the other thing is, we're worried about somebody getting hurt that's actually moving city equipment. And they are going to actually put the city equipment away after they wipe it down and clean it and do all that stuff and sanitize. They're gonna rack the tables and rack the chairs and then the reservation people are going to remove all of their portable equipment, whatever it may be, and they're gonna take their stuff out. And then we come in at the, at the back end with, the Public Works Department comes in and they mop and they sweep and they do the trash dump and they get the room sharp, get the room looking sharp for the next, the next day or the next morning, whatever it may be. So, so yeah, you're partly correct there that we are trying to protect our equipment a little bit better, but also we are worried about somebody possibly getting hurt. And that concludes my response.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Mayor Protem Suarez. I didn't have a question, but I did have a few concerns. Particularly to with, as Councilmember Kearney mentioned, removal of beer, wine, and champagne. I think there's alternative solutions to banning it. I mean, I don't think you should punish, you know, the whole residents who want to reserve it with that condition because of a few people. And I think you can find other ways such as, you know, telling them they'll lose their deposit or fine if they're outright violating and reminding whoever is hosting the event that they're responsible for their deaths. So I don't particularly agree with that. It seems to happen far and few, so I'm, that is one. And then also, two, taking a look at that deposit, it does seem a little extreme and a few other things. And I particularly don't think that this is a rush right now since we're not allowed to be, there's no, with the stay-at-home order, so I don't know that this needs to be decided all tonight. That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Robert, Jim.
Yes, sir. Councilman Osborne?
I basically agree with everything I heard my colleagues say. I don't know how many of us were there when we hashed all this out and we opened the center as far as the policy, and it was Larry who insisted that we employ the sheriffs for the security detail. And I think that was a good idea because they had the authority to actually make an arrest. They didn't have to be called by some security agency and then wait on the response. They could actually do all of it right then and there. And those costs were passed on to the renters. But yeah, I think we went all around and around on this thing.
We did, yeah.
How many years ago it was. I don't think we need to do it again.
Yeah, Councilman, just as a clarification, Pat made a comment about this was, you know, we would not suggest third-party security with alcohol. You know, if there's gonna be alcohol, we need to have sheriffs here and I wasn't suggesting that at all if that was the claim.
Okay, good. Thanks, man.
Yeah. Okay, and my comments are pretty similar. I would like to see that we maintain the beer, wine, and champagne. Um, I would like to see the uh, that we maintain the um, the beer, wine and champagne so that it makes no sense to uh, attract people to have um, a wedding um, at our venue, which is one of the newest venues in the in the South Bay, but yet they won't be able to do um, a toast. Um, so I I just don't see people um, willing to um, to use our venue just for that. And I understand it's only fifty-one um, you know, um, um, events um, so far that's that hasn't involved um beer, wine or champagne. But at the same time, the community center is still um somewhat new in terms of people even knowing, um, being aware, I should say, that the um venue is available, um, if you will. Um, a lot of people, they're not even aware that the venue is available. So I suspect that um, as the venue um matures, um, people will um, will discover it even more so and and want to use the the venue for 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 weddings and um anniversaries and things that nature that that might involve um beer and wine. Um, and I do agree that we don't need um, the sheriff department um on location when there's an event that does not involve beer and wine, but we can retain the sheriff department. Of course, um, the the applicant, of course, would observe the cost should it be on site when there is an event that um involves beer, wine or champagne. Um, the deposit, the deposit is a little steep to me. Um, the registration um, um portion in terms of losing twenty-five percent, you know, of your deposit, that seems a little steep um, um, to me. Um, I I don't know if we if we said about um, I mentioned, how far in advance will a person have to give in order not to um lose the deposit or at least not to lose twenty-five percent um, um, of the deposit? Um, I'm not sure how that works, but the number itself, twenty-five percent, seems pretty steep um, to me, unless it's like the day of the, the day of the show and they counsel, then that's a might be a different story. But if they give um, advance notice, whatever we agree that is, I think twenty-five percent might be high. And finally, the um, I'm concerned about the um, the hour charging um, um, users, uh, the hour before and an hour after. Um, I understand all about the equipment, um, so there could be opportunities where if there's some equipment, equipment, like let's say a projector or what have you, um, that city staff, of course, could could then handle those kind of equipment. But if you're talking to equipment such as chairs, tables and chairs, um, they can sign a waiver that that says that that, you know, if they get hurt stacking chairs, then they basically um, um, the city is not liable or what have you. I just don't see the need to tack on two hours in addition to the 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 base cost. I think that's gonna probably hinder people from using the facility. I've been to a number of events in other cities, um, in-state and out-of-state where we actually had to put the chairs together and the the tables together, what have you, and we save that cost. And if there was some equipment that was sensitive, they came in and staff and dealt with those equipment instead of the tables and chairs. So that's something I'm concerned about. And I also do agree that this is something that we should um, bring back um, at a later date, um, that you can take um, our comments tonight and perhaps massage it and um, bring it back um, um, at a later date, seeing that we don't have any um, activities at the community center at this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's Kevin Chun. Um, I want to thank you and the council for all of your comments. I do think that the comments were constructive and we will take your advice um, and consider all of the the things that were said, um, revisit um, these changes to the policy and at some later time in the future, we'll come back with um, with um, revised recommended changes for you to consider.
Okay, thank you, sir. So without any exception, we'll um.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One more thing under the reservation setup and cleanup. Uh, if you read that little paragraph, it says therefore staff is suggesting that a primary applicant be required to submit a floor pan confirming the number of table and chairs. Now, the event you and I went to, you got that big prestigious award, they had a lot of tables set out there, but the people didn't show up. So I think it's a set up as they come, not doing a floor pan for a party. So I think that should be looked at too again.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. I want to thank you for this um, um, report um, at my desk and your um, folks over at the community services.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. With that, we'll move our agenda to item number ten. Um, concerning um, but declaring emergency conditions for um approval of repairs. That's a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and city council members. I will handle this one as well. This is the resolution declaring an emergency condition and approving repairs without notice for bids pursuant to California contract code uh sections. Uh, just really briefly, on the afternoon of September twenty-eighth, city staff recognized a relatively steady leak coming through the ceiling gaps surrounding a drainage pipe at the Carol Hieck Hoffman Community Center parking garage. So the leak was severe enough to leave a growing puddle approximately three feet and four feet width underneath, and uh, it was something we had to take care of really quickly, and I think we did that. Uh, there was some damage to the following areas, uh, carpet and drywall at the third floor, south and west hallways, uh, ceiling and attached to wooden panels above the second floor, family room and meeting room, the south meeting room, and carpet and drywall of the second floor, family room and south meeting room. And just as of this evening, I would just like to report that all of that has been remedied. Uh, the, you know, the the work has been done, everything has dried out according to my conversations with uh, the contractor that was overseeing the project. And and it sounds like to me that they're getting ready to start reconstructing. So uh, in a recent meeting involving the city manager and department heads, it was determined that the city would file an insurance claim for covered damages and pay the ten thousand dollar deductible. Uh, the city has approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars available in Los Angeles County Recreation Parks and Open Space District Measure A Maintenance Servicing Funding. However, the use of the funding has to be approved and will be reimbursed after the fact based on the actual costs up to the amount available. Since the available funding has been included in the two thousand nineteen twenty budget and current year funding will be added in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, first quarter budget update, it's recommended that the the existing appropriations for Measure A be used to cover the the cost of the city, the the cost from the city cash pool until it's obtained and reimbursement is received. As a backup plan, in the unforeseen circumstance that approval to use Measure A funding is denied, staff would like the option and approval to use Urban Development and Action Grant, otherwise known as UDAG funding for the deductible and any costs not covered by insurance, up to sixty-nine thousand dollars and some change, which is being sought for uh, under Measure A. Uh, in addition, I myself will initiate a LACR PSD Measure A Annual allocations Grant Project to renovate the community center and take care of some of these items. And this is a project that's been on my radar screen for some time, and this would involve replacing all carpet in the public areas with safe and low maintenance flooring such as laminate, paint the interior of the community center, including the parking garage, as well as another, a number of other community center improvements. Due to this extremely unfortunate incident, city staff is suggesting that the city council declare an emergency situation to allow staff to procure any necessary equipment, services and supplies to repair the damaged areas uh, in the community, at the community center. Declaring an emergency situation will allow city staff to initiate repairs to the community center without undertaking the typically required bidding process for public works projects, as such delays would likely result in unrepaired items and increasing levels of damage to the community center facility. Per Contract Code two zero one six eight, an affirmative vote of four of the five members of the city councils required to approve this emergency declaration. The city attorney has approved as reviewed and approved resolution CC dash twenty-ten dash zero five six as to form. At this time, the extent of the damages and cost to fully remanent the community center damage is unknown. Once uh continued appropriations are carried forward from the FY twenty budget to the FY twenty-one quarter budget, first uh, first quarter budget is approved uh, using Measure A Maintenance and Servicing Funds. The appropriation can be used to pay for the ten thousand dollar insurance deductible and once again, any unforeseen costs not covered by insurance, while authorization is sought to use these committed funds for repairs. Should the approval not be obtained, staff recommends the use of UDAG funds as a backup plan once again. Staff recommends that the city council approve resolution number CC dash twenty-ten dash zero five six, declaring an emergency condition and approving the work necessary to make the repairs to the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center without notice for bids pursuant to California Public Code, Public Contract Code, Sections eleven oh two, two zero one eight six and two two zero five zero. Uh, second recommendation is to authorize the Director of Finance to use the the transfer of the actual cost for the insurance deductible and uncovered cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven doll sixty-one dollars from the UDAG fund, Fund two fifteen, to Measure A Fund two eighty-one. In the event the LA County Parks and Recreation Park and Open Space District denies the request to use Measure A, Measure A Maintenance and Servicing Funding for the community center repairs. And the third and final recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute contracts and other documents necessary to complete this work. And that concludes my report. And uh, we are available for any questions that you folks may have.
Okay, I think we got that. With that being the case, um, of those recommendations, are there any questions on the the staff um, um, recommendations before we entertain motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Reed. I have a question. Um, and uh, this I'll direct to Mike. Mike, um, were you involved with the repairs when we had the flooding in City Hall? And have you made a comp uh comparable between the two different floors and the surface area to see how that balances out? I'm just concerned sixty-nine thousand may not be anywhere near close enough for what we're talking about.
Uh, you know, I was was not very involved in the City Hall flood. That was done administratively over at City Hall. I was I was vaguely involved, but uh, you know, comparatively speaking, the damage is worse on the second floor, uh, south meeting room and family room areas than it is upstairs. I think when we're talking about upstairs, we're generally talking about about uh, you know, and all the studs and and the floor boxes are metal, so there's no mold issues or anything like that. Uh, but the damage upstairs on the front floor was uh, I I would, is considerably less because the the water just basically ran down the uh, the south hallway and then made a right hand turn down the west hallway and just drained right down through. So as of this afternoon, the carpet has been steam cleaned and uh, you know, it it doesn't have the smells that it used to have, and it's 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 greatly improved, even more so before the flood. Uh, and discussions with CMT, we kind of thought that there is a a strong possibility that the cost could go above uh, that amount as well. Uh, yeah, it's hard to say how much uh, how how much higher it's gonna go, but uh, we did think that uh, it it could go possibly as high as one hundred thousand dollars.
Councilmember Reed, uh, this is Kevin Chun, city manager. Um, I'm gonna attempt to um, respond to your question as well, and I'll ask Marla to um, jump in uh, with with additional information. But the sixty-nine thousand dollars that has been mentioned, that that's the funding that is currently available through the grants that we've received previously. Um, and we just use that same number in terms of our possible request for use of UDAG funds, um, just in case there were other that might be necessary that wasn't covered by insurance. But um, the point is that we 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 um, we believe that that should be an amount sufficient to cover our cost for the um, insurance deductible, uh, which is ten thousand dollars. Um, after we satisfy that deductible, the uh, cost for repairs should be borne by the insurance company. So we don't believe we will have to use uh, more than the ten thousand dollars for the deductible, but um, we just put that up there, uh, at sixty-nine thousand dollars, uh, just in case we might have some other expenses, but we don't anticipate them at this time.
Okay, so that's not actually actually uh, cost estimates upon demand or damage and then running from there, uh, being all things as it is according to the report, we would expect that insurance would be able to cover all of this with the exception of the ten thousand. So I mean, I'm okay with the ten thousand, knowing that we have a fifty-nine thousand buffer is one thing, um, authorizing to spend against it without coming back to council I have a concern for.
Okay, thanks for.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I have a question for either Mike or Kevin. Is the community service staff gonna be relocated while they're doing their work on the second floor? Because it's, but their office, I believe, the south end of the building, second floor?
Uh, I'll try to answer that first, and Mike, you can jump in as well. Uh, Councilmember Kearney, to in response to your question, uh, we have spoken with um, uh, the contractor who was remediating the issues that we had. Uh, they are potentially um, a company who could do the repairs for us. Um, and we did ask that question, and uh, it it wouldn't be necessary to relocate um, the staff. The uh, the work could be done in a way where it wouldn't be um, uh, a bother to the staff or or a health concern for the staff. Um, we we've talked about ways that we could um, prevent staff from entering the area and and creating ways where the construction would not impact staff as well. So um, we we have looked into that and and at this point, we think that it can be done without having to remove the staff.
And yeah, yes, I would just like to add that uh, we we have dealt with this already. You know, the flood happening uh, uh, last last Monday, you know, we've already uh, kept staff out of those areas, you know, alternate alternate uh, walkways to the kitchen or the elevator, what they're just, we're just not bypassing that area. We're taking alternate routes uh, to get back to the kitchen uh, for our, you know, our essential programs, which is the meal delivery program and the meals on wheels. So we have already been working in that fashion as of last week, and we'll continue to do that until uh, the constructions continued and we'll have no staff uh, in in that area.
So you're taking the elevators from the second floor to the third floor? Coming in the back way to your office?
Yes, we're coming in actually through the conference room. Uh, those that need to go to the third floor will go through the public elevator up to the third floor and then go diagonal through the meeting room to the kitchen if they need to get to the kitchen. So uh, yeah, I've been really diligent on that and we, I believe we started that uh, next, last Tuesday. So uh, you know, with construction, though, there's gonna be dust and other things, but uh, we'll keep them out of that area, no question.
Okay. That's it, Robert, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, um, are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion um, concerning item um, ten. Just take the three fourth vote.
Okay, Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney, I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion has been made by Kearney that we approve the staff recommendation. Is there um, a second?
This is Councilman Reed, he'll second.
Councilmember Reed has seconded motion. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the um, the vote on item of ten.
Item ten, Mayor Protem Suarez. Councilmember Osborne?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pullmiles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Item eleven, uh, concerning Cares Act funding allocation, that's a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is Kevin Chun, city manager. Uh, I'll try to be brief with this report. Uh, you, as you'll recall, um, the city received four hundred and five thousand dollars in Cares Act, uh, Federal Cares Act, which was to help with impacts related to COVID nineteen. On September eighth, at your city council meeting, um, the city council approved staff's recommendations for uh, allocating uh, the Cares Act funding in various categories, in particular, um, a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars was um, put in a category for a small business grant program. However, since um, the September eighth meeting, um, finance staff has um, reviewed um, our allocation, realized that uh, there was uh, an error in um, the amount of allocation that we had um, uh, assumed um, under previously incurred city expenditure for sheriff's department costs. Uh, we received information from the sheriff's department, um, Uh, we received information from the Sheriff's Department, um, that, uh, their cost related to Project Room Key was, uh, $59,500. However, we realized that, um, that amount did not include their cost for overhead as for liability insurance. As a result, the actual cost was quite a bit more substantial, um, and amounted to 168, I'm sorry, uh, it amounted to $192,100. Uh, as a result of that, that would change our previously incurred city expenditures category to increase from $168,000 to $300,600. Um, and, uh, if we were to, um, uh, make that change and, um, seek full reimbursement for our Sheriff's Department costs for Project Room Key, uh, we could certainly do that. However, that would result in, um, reducing our small business grant program from $167,000 to $34,400. Um, and, uh, the intent was to provide grants to our small businesses of $5,000 each. Um, and again, if we made this change, that would reduce those grants from 33 to six grants. So, um, after we, uh, realized this, um, this issue, uh, staff reviewed the revised numbers with the city council Business Revitalization Subcommittee, and after reviewing, um, the pros and cons, the subcommittee, um, decided to, or, or, or is recommending that, um, the city council, um, uh, continue on with the allocations as were, uh, approved at the September 8th meeting, which would mean that the, um, um, small business grant program would stay at the original amount of $167,000 and would only result in a partial reimbursement of the Sheriff's Department costs that we've, um, incurred already. And I just wanted to note one other thing, that, um, by doing so, um, there would be no additional cost to the city as all of these costs have already been budgeted for. Um, as, uh, the CARES Act funding that we will receive is supplemental to our budget, and we will not have any additional costs. So with that, um, I will, um, uh, staff is recommending that the city council approve the, uh, subcommittee's recommendation to maintain the city's, um, CARES Act allocation as approved by the city council on September 8th. And with that, I'm glad to take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, report. Are there any, uh, questions on, on item 11 concerning the, um, CARES Act allocation for, um, yeah, for the business, um, grant?
This is Mayor Proten Suarez. I have a question for our city attorney, um, and it's, it's a hypothetical question. If we were to go the other route and just take the funding for what we're saying that we've spent, or, or we're deeming as cost for Project Room Key, would that, um, lift some of the, uh, liabilities off of the county? Say, for instance, further down the line, we, we find out, oh, you know, we, we've spent, we're able to prove that we've suffered costing damages and we're citing Sheriff's as one, um, would accepting the funds from this CARES, um, Act grant alleviate or, or, um, kind of, I don't know how, how to say it, but would this give them, you know, would they be able to use this as, oh, you've already got partially funded through the CARES Act?
If there was a reason for us to be able to, like, a valid theory of liability for us to collect money from the county, we wouldn't be able to get it twice. So, um, to the extent the county did something that we could say that they owed us for these reasons, if we take it from the CARES Act, we couldn't then also get it from the county. That would be considered double dipping.
Yeah.
But you'd have to have a, a valid theory of liability from the county to be asking them for the money.
Thank you, I just wanted to hypothetically speak, because we're not quite sure of the future, so just hypothetically. I appreciate it though, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, questions on the report? Okay, I, I'll just say before, um, that, um, I do, um, recommend that we continue with the, um, with, with funding the grant opportunity for, um, our small businesses, which, as we know, is the, the, the lifeblood, um, of the community, and they have suffered, um, through, um, COVID, um, um, 19, and this is just a little gesture to, that could keep, um, you know, a business from, um, um, closing, closing down here, um, um, in the city. So I think it's, it's money, uh, well spent, um, an investment, um, in the, uh, the businesses is, is an investment in the community. Um, with, with that, unless there's any other, um, any discussions on it, I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the subcommittee's, um, recommendation.
And, Mr. Councilmember Kearney, I'll second it. I agree with you. I agree with the, the, the grants, I love that, because we're gonna have a lot of people hurting for money to, for the, the property of small businesses.
And, this is Councilman Reed, I too agree, but I think, uh, I, I think I would rather the subcommittee not be the one recommending we approve their, uh, recommendation.
Um, I, it, it doesn't make many difference, although it is, it is proper, um, um, within the rules of order and policy to do so. Um, however, if someone else, if, let's, let's have, um, Pat Kearney make, make the motion.
And I'll second it.
All righty, with that being the case, um, the motion was made by Pat Kearney that we approve the, the recommendation of the subcommittee and seconded by Councilman Reed. Are there any discussions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna ask the council to please vote on item number 11. Um, Madam Assistant City Clerk, I mean, Madam, sir, please conduct the vote.
For item 11, Mayor Proten Suarez?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is, um, item 10 is the report from the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I just have a couple items. Um, last week, uh, we were informed by the, uh, Government Finance Officers Association, um, that the city had been awarded its Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, uh, for our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or our CAFER, uh, for the fiscal year that ended, um, in, uh, Ju-, on June 30th, 2019. Um, this is a, uh, very prestigious, uh, award, financial award for us to receive as it, um, uh, shows, um, the city's good care and responsibility of our finances, and it also shows, um, the fact that the city is, uh, very transparent, um, and meets its high standards, um, uh, in terms of, uh, reporting our financial position to the public. So, uh, with that, um, I just wanted to, uh, congratulate, um, our, uh, Finance Director and our Department of Finance, our Finance Department, uh, for their hard work in, uh, ensuring that our finances are in good shape, and, uh, for, um, uh, this well-deserved, uh, honor on behalf of the city. So, um, this is something that, uh, we should be receiving soon. Uh, we have received, uh, what the award will look like, and Matt, if you could put this on screen for everyone to see.
I can't see it.
I can't. Think he's working on here. It's coming, okay, there it is. So, um, as, um, uh, as I've seen it in, in other agencies, uh, we should be receiving a framed certificate that should look like this. Um, it's a nice, um, you know, certificate that we can put on our wall to show the public that, uh, you know, we've, uh, received this award because of our, our good work that we do in our Finance Department. And so, um, it's, uh, again, just a positive reflection on, on the city. Um, this is something that, uh, is very important to me, and I know that I've talked with Marla, it's very important to her for us to, uh, receive on an annual basis. I know that, um, uh, the city has received this in previous years, um, but we haven't in at least the last, um, few years or several years. Um, but it will be, um, our goal moving forward to, uh, work towards receiving this award, um, on an annual basis. In addition to, um, other awards that are out there, um, I've also spoken with Marla about, um, going after the, uh, California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, uh, Budget Award that's given on an annual basis, and that, um, uh, similar to this GFOA Award, it shows our excellence in budgeting, and, uh, that is another award that, um, again, reflects well on the city and shows, um, how well we take care of our budget and finances. Um, and, uh, it, it's something to show the, the public, our residents, um, you know, how we are, um, uh, taking care of public funds that they provide to us. Um, so anyways, um, again, just wanted to bring this to, um, the city council's attention as well as the public, and again, congratulate Marla and the Finance Department.
Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna check right here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, okay, so I believe that when we get this certificate of achievement, that we present it to Marla and her Finance Department, and this item be agendized like this one should have been, because I don't know if all of us are aware of how many cities, municipalities, water district, water boards applied for this, and how it went from A to B to C to how we got finalized, we were one of the finalists. So I believe the next time this comes forward, when we get the certificate, we agendize the whole 10 yards like it should have been on the, for this agenda, and present the certificate to the Finance Department.
Yeah, I, I agree, because this is certainly, um, to be congratulating, certainly a, a big deal for Marla and the department in, in the city. Um, this is, this is a, a big deal, um, all the hard work they put over there in the Finance Department, creative financing, you know, at that, you know, sticking to the, um, all of the rules and regulations and best practices for the, um, municipal accounting, um, um, is involved, and this, uh, really tells the story that goes on behind the scenes that, you know, no one, you know, the public are not aware of, you know, what goes on behind the scenes, but this tells the story that hard work that Marla and her, um, crew over in the Finance Department is, um, doing over there, and so it is to be congratulated, um, and to be presented, you know, publicly, so I, I agree with the council member.
Okay, thank you. Turn it back over to you, Kevin.
Anyone else? Okay, that was, that was the city manager's report, right?
Uh, that was, that was one element of it, so thank you for those comments. Um, uh, when we receive the actual reward, uh, award, uh, we will return back to the city council and make a presentation at that time. Uh, second item I, uh, just wanted to bring to, um, your attention as well as the public is, um, tomorrow, we will be having, um, let's see if I can find it here, we will be having, um, a blood drive, um, that we are working on in partnership with, uh, UCLA, and, uh, the, uh, blood drive will be from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM right in front of City Hall. Um, there is a blood shortage, as there always seems to be, and so anyone who is willing and able to, um, uh, donate their blood for, you know, this good cause, um, the blood drive will be on tomorrow. And, uh, if, if any of you need, uh, additional information regarding that, uh, please let us know, and we can provide that to you. And that's all I have, thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Let's move on to, uh, reports from, uh, the mayor and councilmembers. Let's start with Councilmember Osborne.
Thank you, Robert, because I have, uh, nothing to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed?
Ditto, this period, nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Mr. Pat Kearney?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, yeah, all right. Burn this for a while.
I haven't had a meal on the city in a while, nothing to report.
You haven't had a meal in a while, okay.
A meal on the city.
Okay. All right, that's good, that's good to know, and, um, I haven't attended, I'm not sure when did I attend that sanitation district, was that was before or right after the last meeting, it might have been right after the last meeting, but at any rate, that was the most that I have attended. Seemed like I attended something by Zoom for the city, but I attended so many Zoom calls, I can't quite remember what it was. With that being the case, it is time to adjourn. We don't have a call session tonight. So, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Long Island City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, October 19th, 2020. It is now 7:40, and this meeting is adjourned.
I have 7:36.
Oh, really? I got, yeah, yeah, 7:36, yeah, that clock is wrong, 7:36.
Okay. Night, everybody.